Okay, I have seven o'clock. Come to order, we'll start our meeting. Purpose of our meeting tonight is our work session to go over the agenda for next Monday night. We've got several things that I think we will probably need to discuss a bit. After we, let's see, as far as all, I think we have everyone here except Commissioner Gregory, Commissioner Gully, and Commissioner Johnson. They were all excused. They're out of town or unable to come. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We'll open court. Invitation, Ms. Baker, you good with that? Okay, thank you. And pledge is by Landon Gully. He is aware of that. Said that's not a problem. We'll have roll call. We'll either do it electronically or somehow. Hopefully, we'll be able to use the system. It seems to be working a little bit better. Try to remember to push your button if you want to speak and when you, once you're through, please turn it off if you don't mind. Kind of cut back on trying to address some of this feedback still. First order of business will how will be to approve the minutes from the September 27th meeting. They've been distributed. They were in your packets. Did anyone notice anything in those minutes that needed to be corrected, changed, deleted? Okay, if you do notice something, please let us know so we can try to address that prior to the meeting and make those corrections. We'll go through announcements, amendments to the agenda. We've got one thing that we probably need to try to take up, at least talk about tonight, then we can decide whether we want to go ahead and then add it to the agenda, and that's redistricting. We didn't put it on the agenda earlier because we weren't real sure whether it was going to be ready for this month or we were gonna need to wait till next month. So with your indulgence, I'd like to, at this point, go through that, kind of a report from the redistricting committee. Mr. Paxton is here to talk to us about what was done. You should have these maps in your packet, and this one is what's being proposed. This is what it is now. Other way, I'm sorry.
Where it is right now. All the way across is how it's, how it will be. First of all, I want to thank the, the county commission for allowing me to serve on the redistricting committee. Again, we had several members that did an excellent job, and so we appreciate that. A couple of your commissioners, Mr. Jewell, Ms. Baker. We had Mr. Moreland from the election commission, and we had Mr. Edwards from, who's our building inspector. So if you'll look at the map that looks like this, is there anybody that doesn't have a copy? Because I do have more copies. Anyone else? If you'll look at that map, you'll see it, across the top, it says Trousseau County Commission Districts and Population Summary without the prison. You're probably aware that our total population is 11,615. That's what the census said is in Trousseau County. The Comptroller's Office then removed 2,508. That's what was at the prison on the day they took their snapshot, the day the census took their snapshot. So that left 9,107 residents of Trousseau County, and you'll see that number here where it says 2020 total population down near the bottom. Then you have a chart that's running across the bottom. What the requirement is of redistricting is that we have a, no more than a total of 10% deviation from the perfect number. In this case, the perfect number would be 910.7 people. So they rounded that to 911. So what we were looking for is to put 911 people in each district. And that would, of course, give us zero deviation. Now, that's not going to be possible, obviously, because when we move people, we can't move individuals, we move census blocks. And we did have some input with the census about eight years ago. We got them to change some of our blocks, make some of our blocks that were in farming communities that were huge blocks, make them smaller because we knew we were going to grow in those areas. So we were able to do that. So we started looking at our districts, and if you look at this first map, you'll see that there were four districts that were already within range. That's the four gray ones across the bottom of our county. And then there were six districts that were in the top of our county that were out of range. The darker ones were too high, so five, four, and nine had too many people. The white ones were too low. Seven, eight, and three were too low. So the goal of the, just the numbers goal of the redistricting committee was to move people from the districts that were too high to the districts that were too low. But there were some other considerations that we took into account. One of those was what we would consider voting blocks, areas of people who would vote, traditionally vote the same way, making sure that we didn't purposely break them up. Logical things such as, if you look at the boundary between seven and eight, that is 25. That's Highway 25. It makes sense that we use that. That's a major boundary. That we use the river, the boundaries between 10 and one and two is the river. Makes sense that we use those geographic boundaries. And then we also considered you all. We wanted to make sure that we did not move a district line in a, in a manner that would impact you all, that would move you from one district to another, so that we would end up with three commissioners in one district the next time we, that we have an election. These lines that we draw now will be in effect for the 2022 election. They will be used for that election. What we were able to draw these lines so that it did not impact any commissioner. The only commissioner who is even close is you. You're, the, we're proposing that we move the district line between seven and nine over to Damascus, but you live on the east side of Damascus, so you would still be in District Nine. We looked at the school board members. Were the school board members still in their districts? And the answer to that is yes. We looked at the school board districts, because the school board districts are, of course, are comprised of two county commission districts, but they have to be contiguous. They have to touch. In 2010, the last time we did this, after we shifted the lines, we found that we had pulled apart one of the school board districts. They were no longer touched, and so we had to rejumble all of the school board districts. The plan we are proposing doesn't have to have that. So lots of counties around, I know the county mayor and our county attorney, both of whom have had discussions with other folks from other counties. Some of them are really struggling as they try to get through this process. When we got the numbers, we were pleasantly surprised that we felt, well, we can do this with a reasonable, reasonably not disturbing our county. So we, the redistricting committee is proposing four, changing four lines. So now if you'll look at this map, the one that's all gray, what you will see at the bottom is, Mr. Clarity, do you not have them? I've got them. I got some more copies if you, okay, you, Mr. Burton are sharing, okay. What you'll see at the bottom is that the total deviation is now 6.9. We started at 21%. That was too much. We are now down to 6.9, and the law says you have to be under 10. So we, we meet that requirement. That was the, one of the requirements we were concerned with. We made no major changes to any district. So as we said, everybody stays in their district commissioner-wise, everybody stays in their district school board-wise, and what we end up moving is 234 people. And that's people, that's not voters, that's, that's, that's household people. So the, the four proposed changes that we, that the redistricting committee are making is to move 60 people at the very top between four and three. That's Storytown Road, those of you who live up there. If we move that from Halltown Road over to Storytown Road, that encompasses 60 people in that census block, and it will then balance, it will balance between three and four. You'll notice that four was high, three was low, and they were at negative six and plus seven deviation in the original. And then when you move those, that moves three to a point nine and four to a point four. So it makes them zero, basically. They are right where they need to be. Then we're proposing between five and eight, down by 25, and Sulphur College Road, where Sulphur College extends across 25 and goes up towards, I want to say, is that Snake Hollow up there? That sounds about right. Except, we're not going to go all the way to Snake Hollow. We're going to stop at the power lines, where the power lines go across. That would move 101 people. That's actually three census blocks. That would move 101. And so if you, you'll see that originally five was 11% too high, and eight was 9% too low. When you make that change, then five becomes a point 5% too low, and eight becomes 1.9% too high. So again, we're within our range. That made that balance. And again, that only moves, that one line slides it out slightly to the west. We did not bother six nor 10 because didn't need to. But seven needs some people. So we looked at the boundaries around seven, and the place that we could, that made sense was to allow seven to reach across Broadway, in fact, right in front of this building, right here. And we would move 53 people, there's two census blocks there, from nine to seven. And if you look at your gray map and you look right there where the nine is on the map, then you go back to where seven is, there's a little tiny rectangle piece of seven. That's the new proposed block. That was a concern for us because of Ms. Jones, but she lives on the right side of the road. So that's, that's a good thing. So we were able to make that change. It gave us the numbers that we needed. If you look, that took, originally, seven was 10% too low, nine was 6% too high. When we make those changes, seven is 4.5% too low, and nine is nearly perfect. One of the things we also considered, this was why we were glad we had the building inspector on, the building inspector was able to talk to us and say, well, this is where I expect a lot of growth. And he, we know that there's a lot of growth coming in seven. So even though seven is a little bit lower than the other districts right now, it's still within range, but it's a little bit lower, that will fill up very quickly as those new houses are built out there. So this map right here with those, oh, I apologize. We made one other change, and this was just to try to balance a couple numbers. Between one and two on Latty Reese Road, originally, Latty Reese was using the creek that runs through there. We moved that district line for, for District One over to the road. That's why it smoothes out. You can see it used to be curvy, now it's smoothed out. That moved 20 people. And of course, originally, Districts One was 2% low and District Two was 5% high. When we moved those 20 people, it makes District One nearly perfect and District Two at 2.4. So again, it just shrunk that range. We were looking at shrinking that range. So this is what we would propose. You, as the county commission, you are the ones who make this decision. We would propose this to you. We did not look at making any other changes. We did not look at making any cosmetic cleanups or anything like that because this moves the minimum amount of people. Most voters will be in the same district they've been in for the last 10 years, and this will keep them in that same for the next 10 years. So we thought that that was the, the most stable thing to do. I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. I know, I think one reason that we were able to do this with as few changes as we have is 10 years ago, we really, the districts that we thought we were going to have a lot of growth in, we tried to purposely make them at the bottom of the numbers. And I think that's reflected in what we're able to do this time. We're trying to accomplish the same thing again, this time by trying to make those high-growth anticipated areas a little on the lower side, and then they'll come back into perspective just by attrition over the next few years. Mr. Dickey, I believe you had a question. You recognize?
I wonder why the prison's not counted. Why the prison, if you got 500 prisoners out there, you don't count them? Or are they, are they allowed to?
No, they're not counted because they don't vote.
Okay.
In our county.
And the other thing, Mr. Dickey, this is something that we talked about 10 years ago when we, or eight years ago when we realized the prison was coming. If we had put, if we counted those, then every district has to have the same amount. So there's no way we could keep our 10 districts. There was not going to be any way to do that. And that was the, obviously, the will of the body was to try to keep those 10 districts.
You would have had two-point-something voting districts within the prison boundaries.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, no.
And they're only going to be removed for our local redistricting. That's what the state law says. So for, for all the other considerations, they are counted. So like, they'll be counted in the state districts, they'll be counted in the US districts. They just don't count locally. And as Chairman Jewell said, one of the things is, there's no voters. They don't have a, they don't have a voter out there. I thought, I thought Mr. Nolan had raised his hand.
Mr. Nolan, did you have a question? Commissioner Nolan, did you have a question? Did you get an answer?
I was going to ask, Latty Reese Road, go ahead. It's going to be the road now, place of the creek?
Yes, sir.
All right. When you get to Lock Six, does, am I, yeah, am I still getting all of that on the side or?
The only, only thing that's going to change is, is that the, if you're going up Latty Reese, okay?
Yeah.
The people that are between Latty Reese and the creek are now going to be in District One.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That will be the only change there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? We'd like to put this in, it'll need to be in the form of a resolution which we can have ready for us next Monday night, if everybody's in agreement with doing that and add it to our agenda so that we can go ahead in dispense of this. We can do it in November. We have to have it done by the end of the year. So the sooner the better. I'm just really ecstatic that we didn't have, have to have more changes because there's a lot of counties that are really struggling with this, folks. We, we really lucked out on this. We kind of dodged a bullet.
And, and I, I would agree with you, Chairman Jewell, that by thinking ahead last time and trying to think ahead this time, I think it makes it easier 10, 10 years down the line. And we did include, one of the reasons we included Mr. Edwards is he's, he's a nice young fellow, and in 10 years, he'll have that experience. He's been on that committee. So he may very well be running it because I'll probably be in the old folks' outfit. Yeah, never know.
Do we have any other questions on this? Maintain everyone that's elected currently in the district. No one moved out of the district. None of the school boards moved out of their district. None of the school board district numbers changed as far as the dual makeups. So it's just a few boundaries, very minimal. If you, you know, if you overlay these and hold them up to the light, you can see real easily what was changed. And it's very, very minimal.
And what I'll, I'll try to get from the Comptroller's Office between now and Monday, next Monday, will be an easier map to actually show you those, those district lines that we're going to move, just so you can see.
Yeah. I had asked Mr. Paxton to try to, like, show the existing ones in a dotted line and the new ones in a solid line or vice versa, so, so that it was easier to see exactly where those changes were. But they're pretty minimal. And they're, and they're common sense when you're out there in the district, you'll get to that boundary and it's obvious. It's pretty obvious. So if everybody's okay with it, hearing no objection, we will try to have this ready to add as a resolution in next Monday night's business. Any further discussion? If not, we're going to move on. Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Thank you to the committee. Yeah, I worked really hard on this, and I'm just thankful, like I said, that it was as painless this time. We certainly didn't expect it to be that way. Citizens' response to the agenda. We will ask the citizens to sign in if they want to speak to the agenda. County mayor's report, Mr. Chambers. Mayor Chambers, do you have anything you want to?
I will go ahead and just let you know of one thing. The state of Tennessee, along with, I think the majority of other states, has been in some opioid litigation with some pharmaceutical companies and distributors. The Tennessee County Service Association has a task force that's been working with some of the counties and cities that filed lawsuits and the state of Tennessee Attorney General's Office. Myself and about four or five other mayors are on that task force. We're coming down to the end of a process to draft a resolution and some, some fax documents about what that settlement is going to look like. The state of Tennessee needs a certain amount of counties to sign off on that, and if we get that amount of counties, the state will actually get more distribution from the settlement. So we're working on finalizing that language, and once we do that, that has to be submitted to the county, and you will have to approve that. And I think we have to have that done by the 1st of July. So look for that to come to the county commission next month once we get that language finalized.
Committee reports. Steering committee had no meeting. I was going to be out of town, left it up to the mayor. He said he didn't really have anything to present, so we decided not to have the meeting. Budget and Finance met tonight. All of the items on your agenda were approved and sent forward with a recommendation from Budget and Finance to be on Monday night's agenda. Personnel committee meets tomorrow night at 6:00, 6:00 o'clock. Okay. Certainly, just bear in mind, if you're not on these committees, to, that you're always welcome to come, even if you're not serving on the committee, and give your input, ask questions, and, and be aware of what's going on. Prison relations, I believe that's Wednesday night, at 6:00, Mr. Thor. Okay, the 20th. Parks and Rec has got a meeting scheduled on October 25th. Just prior to our 7:00 meeting, they're going to meet at 6:00 that night, for anyone that can be here a little bit early for that. Are there any other committees that we overlooked that met or will be meeting? Okay, don't see any.
Commissioner Jewell, I'd like to invite all commissioners, but especially some of those that are going to be on Budget and Finance, to get a chance to come out tomorrow night. We will be talking about a topic that is in some shape, form, or fashion going to affect our bottom line as we go forward, as it relates to step raises and things of that nature, classifications and merit. And, you know, we, we've got a lot of moving parts right now, but at some point, that's going to come soon to Budget and Finance. So if you want to get a leg up on it, come tomorrow night, 6:00.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Okay. Appointments, Mayor, you going to have any appointments for us?
I'm going to have one appointment to the Water Board, and that is going to be Ms. Kendra Stafford. And I have reached out to one person about the charter revision. They respectfully declined, so I've reached out to a second one, and I'm waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. All righty. Resolutions. First resolution, 2021-29733 is committee assignments. I had hoped to have this finalized to let everybody look at tonight. I'm not quite through with it. I'm trying to reach out to all the current chairman of the various committees and talk to them about their committees. There's several that seem to have gotten, shall we say, a bit unwieldy, and we want to try to trim some of them back, cut the numbers back, trying to limit them to seven, seven people per committee, not counting myself or the mayor. And also trying to limit the committees, basically, to either people that hold an office, some appointed office or an elected office, or our commissioners, and being very selective on people that are not members of the body on these committees. And trying to reach out to those people and try to talk to them and explain to them why, why they're not being picked on. We're just trying to, to trim this back. I've had several commissioners question the size of the committees, the numbers of the committees, trying to keep the commissioners down to four, no more than five committees that you serve on, trying, because we had some that were well over that amount. That's one reason that we'd asked you on the survey to rank the committees in the number that you wanted, trying to absolutely make sure everybody is where they want to serve. But there may be some of you that go off of some committees simply because there's too many on it, and those particular are the ones that I was going over with the chairman to try to see which ones they really felt like they needed on their committee. So hopefully, I'll have that for us next Monday night. If you look at it and you don't like it, we don't have to approve it. We can go back to the drawing board, but I'll try to have that to you as soon as I get through with it. Just trying, you know, it would have been really simple for me, just to rubber stamp it and say, I'll just leave them what they were last time. But really trying to put some thought into this and make it a little leaner and cleaner. So that's where we're at with that. I hope, hope y'all understand that and are okay with that. And if you're not, please reach out to me and we'll, we'll talk about it. Let's see, next resolution is 2021-3734. This is support of opposition to the vaccine mandate. This, little bit of explanation on this one. Received this from the County Mayor's Association. I believe it came to Mayor Chambers, and he had forwarded over to Amy, and Amy thought he wanted it on the agenda, and that's why it's here. But I've had nothing but favorable comments from the few that I've had. So my suggestion, I would like to see us leave it on here since it's on the agenda and it's, it's been published that it's on the agenda. But we certainly, and I think the mayor, you're okay with leaving it on here. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. That's completely up to the county commission. If you decide you want to leave it up. Yes, sir. That's completely up to the county commission. If you decide you want to leave it up here, on here, you can. That's completely up to you.
Anyone having strong feelings on it one way or the other? Okay, I think we'll just leave it on the agenda. If you don't like it, vote against it. If you like it, vote for it. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
The Tennessee mayors have signed on to this.
Okay. I think it's, it's making the rounds through most of the counties. Most counties are adopting it. And it, it doesn't, it's just a support resolution. It doesn't obligate us to anything in any way. We have these from time to time. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay. Next resolution is 2021-31735. This is a red, resolution to recommend an amendment to the charter. This is in Article Four, Section 406, under Metropolitan Executive Departments and Boards. And this is a resolution to request that the Election Commission conduct a referendum, that they put this on a referendum vote at the next general election, which we think would be August, for the public to decide whether they want to make these changes to the charter or not. This, we are not making these changes. This is strictly a resolution, sending it to the public to vote on it. What is proposed to be changed is on 406C, under minimum requirements. You can read it there. The last sentence where it says salaries for employed personnel thereof selected in accordance with governing bylaws of such department. That would be changed to read compensation for employed personnel. Trying to get rid of the term salaries because salaries does not reflect the way the, the fire department is paid now or any plans to pay them into the future. They're paid per dim or per call. If you change that word to compensation, if you had hourly employees or salaried employees, they would be covered under that, that word, that word change. Also trying to get rid of the term bylaws from what we can find. Most governmental fire departments are governed by the, the rules and personnel policies of the county. Independent fire departments, particularly independent volunteer fire departments or fire districts typically have been in our rule by bylaws. So it doesn't feel like that the bylaws are appropriate at this time for the way the fire department is funded and structured. It's not to try to make any major changes other than to try to get it the way it is. I know when we were going over the personnel policy changes, we were having to add language in there to include bylaws. So we're just trying to, to do away with that so that all the departments are under the same rules of, of operation and personnel policies. This was presented to the Charter Commission. They did vote favorably to recommend it to the county commission. We will have to pass this on three separate readings and I believe by two thirds vote. Is that correct? Two thirds vote for this to be put to a referendum. It doesn't change the charter. It just asks the public if they want to change the charter on a referendum vote. So do we have any questions on this? Okay, clear as mud. Okay, move on. Next, we'll get into ordinances. If we do add the resolution on the redistricting, we will add it after that one before. It does not need to be by an ordinance. It needs to be by a resolution. So. Ordinances, first one we have is 226-2021-17. This is an ordinance to repeal Title 18 of the water sewer, water and sewer of the Hartsell-Trowswell County Government Code. This is there again, one of those efforts in trying to go back through the old language of the old Hartsell codes and try to bring them over and adopt them into our set of codes. This recommendation, I believe, was made by Water Board Attorneys and I think, Mr. Beller, have you reviewed this? Mr. Beller's reviewed this and Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to say on this one?
No, sir. I think you explained it pretty well.
Okay, do we have any questions on it? What we'll be doing is trying to repeal what's there. That's what this resolution does. And then it would be up to the, to the Water Department to cover this in their, in their rules and regulations. These items where they would go to. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir. When you amended the responsibilities of the Water Department in February last year, you said that their rules and regulations control, but there are certain sections of Title 18 that contradict what the rules and regulations of the Water Department did. So this will bring that all in to compliance.
Policy is, is an attempt to clean up the language on what's already been voted on. Okay, any questions on it? Okay. Let's see, okay. Okay, then we'll move on to ordinance 227-2021-18. This is a request for rezoning on three partials located at the intersection of Hickory Ridge Lane and McMurray Boulevard. Currently, they're zoned R1. They previously, I believe, were commercial and want to take them back to the commercial status for commercial development. This was for the Planning Commission on October the 12th. And we will, of course, if it passes first reading, have a public hearing on this at our November meeting on November 22nd. Any questions on this one? Taking it, it's currently R1, taking it to C2 roadside commercial, what it used to be. Not real sure how, when and why it got changed, but it did. Okay. Say no questions. If the next one is a ordinance 228-2021-19. This is an ordinance to amend Article Five, Section 502O zoning resolution. They're again taking partials to, from A1 agriculture into R1. I believe there was some partials near this that were already rezoned R1, if I'm remembering correctly. Is that right, Ms. Baker? And this was recommended by the Planning Commission, I believe unanimously? I think so. Okay. So are there any questions on it? It's just seemed like a good place for development. This property, I believe, is owned by Darrell Carmen Ayers. If I'm correct, if I'm remembering correctly, it's where, where Darrell and him live, north up on 141, right at the county line up there at Masters Lane. Any questions on that one? Okay. Changing it from A1 to R1. It's a request to the family. Next one is ordinance 229-2021-20. This is an ordinance to amend Article Five, changing a partial from A1 to R1. This is a partial up on Highway 10. There again, it adjoins, I believe, quite a bit of R1 around it, close to it, or is it not on this one? I'm trying to remember.
Right across from the church on Highway 10.
Yeah.
Across from Mr. Walsh. There's an empty lot. It was the Jason and Shepherd property. He had, I think, a couple of trailers there.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, the, all of the property, the big block to the north of the blue there, the upper corner, that's all R1 residential, if I'm remembering correctly. Now, this is further down. This is further back. Yeah, okay. Yeah. This was recommended by the Planning Commission from their October 12th meeting. There again, for development, taking it from A1 to R1. Any, any questions on that one? Yes, sir.
I just want a quick question. Do we know how many driveways would be entering to Highway 10? Did they talk about that at all?
Any, any driveways that would be entering on Highway 10 would be subject to permitting by the state since that's a state highway.
Access to Old 10 too. Talking about the one up past me, Ms. Baker?
No, I don't think so. It's across, there's a little sliver of land in there across from it, but I don't think, is it? It's over from it, but it's, it's really not used. Okay. Okay, any, any further questions on that one? Okay. All right, thank you. Budget amendments. I believe that's next. We have 101 Fund Balance Draw, Urgency Performance Grant. This was a grant that we received last year, late in the year. Late in June, we received the money, didn't have the opportunity to spend it. And so it rolled into this year's fund balance. So to meet the requirements of that grant, we need to spend it and what it was intended for. So we're going to have to move it back out of the fund balance so that it can be used for the purposes that we received that grant for. So it was money that was put in last year at the end of the year that we've got to, that rolled over that we've got to take back out. Any questions on it? Okay. Next is Election Commission Deputy Compensation. We had had a budget amendment to allow Mr. Paxton to hire a part-time assistant at the Election Commission to work 20 hours a week. I think we had proposed $9 an hour for that position and nobody wants to go to work for that. So we're basically, he's asking that we increase what was allocated to that to allow him to go up to $13 an hour, which is in, in line with what the other assistants and some of the other offices and things are being paid. Probably just was a little just kind of underfunded it to begin with, I guess. I don't know how else to put it. I understand. So this, this, all this money is, would be to, to add into that line category. It's not increasing their hours. It's just giving him little flex, more flexibility is what he can pay a person starting in that. But that will be a fund balance draw. It will come out of fund balance. It will require a, a separate vote on that one. It was recommended by Budget and Finance. Any, any questions on it? The next one we had was Senior Care's Act. This is Budget Amendment 2022-101-116. This was CARES Act funding that was specifically for the senior center. This is not for a month. This is for their total allocation for the rest of the year out of that grant, that CARES Act grant, $44,500. Some of this money, I believe, was carryover from last year. And I think it was probably $9,000 and change left last year. And we're trying to roll it with what the allocation was so that they can use those funds as they see fit. Okay, and that's what that money has to be spent on is them and the way that they want to spend it. Amy, did I get that one right? Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay. We had a few insurance recoveries. This is money that's come in from insurance companies, $5,238 on Budget Amendment 2022-101-12. And this is taking it back to the, to the line items that paid for those repairs. Some vehicle repairs. There was a window broken out of the senior center bus and Sheriff Department patrol vehicle had a conversation with the utility pole. And rescue squad had lost some equipment. And so insurance paid for it. We've got to put it back to where it needs to go. Let's just put some money where it needs, where we got it and where it needs to go to. Any questions on that one? Okay. BA 101-13R or 2022-101-13R. This is a request to amend the 101 County General Fund. Chamber of Commerce has requested tourism funding for printing of 10,000 copies of the Battle of Hartsell Driving Tour brochure. The copies will be placed into the 16 welcome centers across the state. Each center requires a minimum of 500 copies being delivered to them. The cost of printing 8,000, it was going to cost the same to print 10,000. So when I went with that number, that will give them some extra for the ones that run out soonest to try to use there and also use it some locations around, around town. If you're not familiar with that brochure, there's some in the welcome center. You can look at it on your way out. We printed them when we set the driving tour up almost 20 years ago or longer than that. And this is the first time that we've had to try to replenish that stock and it's simply to try to get some tourism interest into the county. We have a lot of people that come to this driving tour. You would be amazed. I would see them. They would come in when I, my office was back here and I would say, you know, they were out here looking at the courtroom. What are you doing? Why are we doing this driving tour? So it does bring a lot of people in and that's the first request that we've had on that. And that's what it's for. Mayor, did I explain that, you think, well enough?
Yes, sir.
Amy? Okay, any questions on it? Okay. All right. Next one are, we have four budget amendments from, from the school system. This, they're all out of the 141. There's a misprint on your, there it says, request is hereby made to amend 101 General. It should be 141 schools. Just a little misprint there. We'll have that cleaned up before the final, final resolution. All four of these came forward from the Board of Education. They were approved at their September 16th meeting. These are all their funds. They're moving their funds from one line item category to another to be spent and used. First one is 2022-141-04. And this has to do with leaps funding. And this is for the after-school funding, after-school programs. The next is a grant, a health services grant, HSSL grant, where they've received this money from state education funds and they need to put it into the line item that they are planning to utilize it in. And that's health service, contracted services. BA 141-06, 2022-141-06 is also a Board of Education request. This is Safe Schools Grant, money they receive that they're using for safety type. This is Safe Schools Grant, money they receive that they're using for safety type improvements. They need to repair some security cameras, traffic barricades, directional markings. They've got a Knox box on one of the schools that they need to repair. That's a fire, fire station, I guess you'd say, and some playground fencing. They're wanting to move 30,000 within their budget to that. So all three of those are just moving money around for them. We will be able to take those three together. The ones for, that we're pulling from fund balances, we'll take them individually on Monday night. Are there any questions on any of these? Okay, move on. Next, we will have notaries, typically we do, they come in this week. And any other business commissioners, anyone have any business? Mayor, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
Amy, did you have anything? Mr. Beller, do you have anything tonight? Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Public comment, anyone from the public? I'm sorry, Mr. Clarity, you're right.
Well, this is nothing business-wise or anything. It's, I think it was last month that Mr. Beller and I and Mr. Gregory were down on the porch talking before we came up to the meeting. Kind of smelt the food from Taco Company over here and Mr. Beller kind of made the suggestion that maybe quarterly after the work session, that we could maybe have a meal, anybody wanted to participate. Maybe get tacos, fried chicken one month time or Subway's or something like that. Just nothing to do with the county money, it's just the ones who want to participate. Put in, get a little pot going and have a meal after the work session. If, just have it for what everybody wants to do.
And you're, you're offering to pay for them?
No, everybody's going to pitch in, I think, I think that was his suggestion.
I just wanted to be sure I was being invited to dinner, I just wanted to know here. Ms. Jones? Then or previously? Alrighty, public comments, anyone want to make a comment? Appreciate y'all being here tonight. Okay.
I was gonna say, Richard Johnson is, he says that he will be here next Monday night. He said.
He is scheduled to get out, he's scheduled to get out this Friday if things go well. Somebody's been slipping him food, one of our commissioners, I'm not sure which one. But he, he has appreciated the calls he's had and he certainly hopes. He, you know, I've assured him that if he is not out next Monday, I'm going in there and sneak him out. I'm going in with a baby buggy and I'm going to put him in a baby buggy and roll him out the front door. So, so he can be here next Monday night. He does plan to be here next Monday night, we certainly hope he can be, okay?
He sits at the front window and watches traffic go by because the sun is in that room and it's warm. So if you want to drive by and see him, you can, he's always at that front window.
He, they had to move his room where he, he doesn't have a window with the room anymore. So used to, you could stand outside the room and talk through the window and, but now you can't do that, so. But you can get in if you, if you call ahead and they know that you're coming, he can have visitors. So, you know, it, he, he would welcome visitors, particularly those that bring food. Mr. Walsh, you recognize?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Ms. Jones gets a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Let us adjourn.